Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November the 2nd, 2015. Is anybody recording this meeting, please?
Free cam cable.
Mr. Selectman?
No.
You're not?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. At 6:00 PM we have a public hearing in conjunction with the Board of Assessors relative to the selection of the residential factor to determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property. That's called a tax split. We determine how much commercials will pay and how much residential will pay. Historically, in the last couple of years, we've given the residential side a bit of a break, I think. So, a discussion on this. What's up?
We would actually...
Front and center.
They're all sitting there.
Yeah, no, I can't...
Trying to push them out?
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
If you don't mind.
This is Karen Mello. She's responsible for getting your tax bill...
It's always me. I'm the one.
She left her broom outside.
Wow.
I guess you don't want your tax bill.
She's a wonderful person. She looks very hard.
Sorry, I got the shoulders.
They just doubled his tax bill, didn't they?
Did they?
She's a wonderful person.
He's lucky we've locked down. We've already finalized our values. That's about what I was going to tell them.
Go back and change his.
I can't even backdoor it. I'm stuck. We would request that this meeting be continued until the 16th of November at 6:00 PM. Paul Capinos has had time to finish his work, but in all of this, there wasn't enough time for the Department of Revenue to certify everything that he had done. So, if we could give you ballpark figures, but they would not be accurate, and I wouldn't want something on camera that turned out to be significantly different. I mean, it might be dead-on, but if we made a mistake or something had to be corrected and we gave you bad numbers, somebody would obviously be unhappy with that. So, we would like to request that this meeting be continued till November 16th. That still gives us plenty of time to finish this hearing, to complete the tax, the recap sheet, to submit those numbers, get an approved tax rate, get it into Vadar, and get the bills printed in a timely fashion.
Not on 12/24.
Not on 12/24. Still with plenty of time. And unfortunately, that was part of me. There have been so many staff changes in the Department of Revenue. They retired something like 16 people. And we were very nervous that it would take forever for our numbers to get in and looked at. But they're doing really quite well, but we just didn't allow enough time for them to review the numbers.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until November 16th at 6:00 PM.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded to continue the hearing until 11:16, 15, and our next Board of Selectmen's meeting at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post it. Thank you, Karen. You do a wonderful job. We love you.
What'd you bring with you, Karen? Your bodyguard?
Well, I can't, you know. When posted the meeting, they had to come.
Got to be good to Karen. She has all the goodies in her office. Candy and stuff like that.
Chunkful, chunkful.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to this? No. I'm not going to head out.
Moving on.
Good night. Thanks, sir.
The next thing on our agenda is a discussion with the Snuggles Way residents. Is there someone here that represents the Snuggles Way residents?
Well, there's a few of us.
Does anybody want to approach the board and speak on behalf of Snuggles Way and your concerns?
I can speak. My name's Tim Bass. I'm one of the residents on Snuggles Way. And we were made aware probably about three or four weeks ago now that there is a, what they refer to as a Bamsi home, that's been, they purchased the property there and they're going to be putting in a assisted living slash group home on the street. And when we became aware of that, it was a bunch of questions that we had regarding, you know, just the process which they went through to have this home built there and what the impact may or may not be on the neighborhood and trying to work through either with representatives from Bamsi themselves or trying to figure out exactly what's going to take place on that property. And we've been in touch with one of their vice presidents, and he's also been in touch with, we've been in touch with the state senator, Michael Roderick, to try to see if we can facilitate a meeting to give us a better perspective on what they're doing there. And we're just, we have concerns as neighbors on the street as to is there an opportunity, would there be an opportunity down the road that this, the use of this home could, would it ever change? Could it potentially change? And we're just trying to see if we can get as much information as possible about what's going to happen there and if there's any opportunity, if it's going to change down the road, down the line.
So, you're concerned now, just so I understand, you're concerned now is it's designed for one purpose now, and you're concerned that there might be an evolution in that purpose down the road?
Correct.
Yeah. I think that's one of the concerns for sure. And I think many of the residents on the street were just, this is going to be now a situation where there'll be workers coming and going throughout the day, three shifts throughout the course of the day. That's just going to kind of change the dynamics a little bit of the neighborhood for sure. And I just think we were all kind of caught off guard by that and weren't really prepared for something like this to go in on the street. And I think we're just naturally concerned about a variety of different things. But safety is number one. We've been told it's going to be run by the Department of Developmental Services at this point in time, which classifies individuals with certain disabilities to be able to live there. But we also know it's a state-funded situation, so if there's not, if at some point, could that change or would that change to a different type of people who might be able to live there? And I think we're just concerned in general.
I understand your concerns, and it doesn't go unnoticed. But, and I think that one of the parts of being a selectman is to put up personal feelings aside and try to deal with this head-on and be fair about everything. And we have looked into it since the concerns have been brought forward. This is a protected class under the federal Massachusetts Fair Housing Act. So, you know, their rights are their rights, and it's also a confidential sort of thing. I'm not sure which one of you received a rather lengthy email. Was that you? From the developer, from Bamsi?
We pretty much all read the same thing. We forward everything to each other.
Okay. So, it was rather lengthy, and I don't, unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it did spell out who was going to be there, what the disabilities of these, not specifically, but, you know, that they are for individuals with disability that will be going actually out, you know, during the day for services and then coming back. They did say that this was, they were going to have somebody in-house 24 hours a day. So, there will be somebody making sure that, you know, nothing goes awry. I know your concerns are not solely with this, but if something down the road were to happen and they left, could this become, say, a sober living facility? And unfortunately, there are no restrictions on that, but it couldn't, it doesn't even have to only happen in your neighborhood. It could happen in anybody's neighborhood. And that's something that maybe potentially we could sit down with the planning board, and I know, and have a discussion. Is there anything that can regulate where those facilities can be and can't be? I know you're in, you know, a cul-de-sac. There is no out, it's not like being on Bullock Road, you know? And we have many of these facilities in town. We have not had any issues or any problems with them. We have IDDI. We have Cranwood. We have the one on Bullock Road. We have an Italian housings area somewhere. So, I mean, there are many, and we haven't had, we haven't had any issues. So, I get where you're coming from. I feel better knowing more about what the facility is going to be. I feel better knowing that they're going to adhere to whatever, even if we had to call them up and say, like, we want the lighting kept down, because they did say there was going to be lighting, but it was going to be kept to a minimum. So, I mean, I think that as long as we communicate with them and as long as you communicate with us, if there are any issues, we can hit it head-on and not wait for it to happen. Sort of being proactive like you are now.
Been, I've lived at the same location in Freetown for 41 years. And about 25 years ago, 20, 25 years ago, I can't remember. Nice house across the street, diagonally across the street from me that sat back behind a cranberry block, was sold. It was sold to the people that run Whitney Academy. And every day in the morning, a good number of vans come in with people, and they go into Whitney Academy, and every night they leave. And I can tell you that in the 25 years, or 20, 25 years, I can't be sure how long they've been there, only once did they have an issue where someone walked away from it. Sometimes they get police calls there for ambulances and things like that. Only once in that amount of time did we ever see anybody out on the road or anything. So, you know, I understand what you guys are saying, but throughout town, there's a number of facilities that have been put up because the law protects them. And, you know, I can tell you from my experience, it is what it is. We were never even notified that this was going to happen. And there were some people in the neighborhood that were upset about it, but you know what? We haven't had any issues.
I think from my... Yes, sir. Well, if you... I was just going to say, from my perspective, you've got a public record, you know, your concerns, you're on television, it's time, and that's a good place to start.
Well, I think that was one of our main objectives today, was just to make it known that these are our concerns, this is what we wanted to bring forward, and let them be heard. And if there are, hopefully, there are no issues. I mean, nobody wants to have any issues, but we just want to let this know that at this point in time, once we became aware of it, we did want to at least have our voice heard. And hopefully, that group will be willing to meet with us too going forward, so we can continue to kind of get more educated and informed on the process and what they're doing. I guess, I'm not sure what, it would have been nice to kind of know if, know in advance that this was going to, this was, potentially was going to happen. I'm not sure if that's possible or not, but I think that may have given us an opportunity even earlier on to open up the dialogue and have some constructive conversations about this, because now we're three, four, five weeks beyond, and there's been a lot of opportunity for, you know, hear different things. And it would have been, it would have been better, I think, for everyone if we would have had the chance from the get-go to get that information.
Seems the way that thing, it seems the way it is in America now. The public finds out after what's going on. It's probably by design. But, you know, like I say, you have a public record now, and at least the public knows how you feel about it. Any other comments, Mr. Saad, Mr. Chukwue?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Derek Gracia, Snuggles Way. First of all, I appreciate your time and letting us speak on the agenda. The only thing I wanted to mention is I think it'd be a great proactive approach from the town's perspective without violating any Fair Housing Act in proposing zoning for properties such as that. For instance, that property abuts a schoolyard, and what that could become adjacent to a schoolyard could be a little more concerning to the town at some point in time. So, at least in zoning, you, for example, you could look at what types of facilities and how they may be a distance from the schoolyard. And I don't think you'd be violating any Fair Housing Act with situations like that. So, from my perspective, I just want to see a proactive approach of what may be done in the town, looking at certain areas to know that, hey, maybe it needs to be at least two acres. You know, that site, for instance, has proposed 14 parking spaces on it, seven in a gravel parking area, seven paved. Not necessarily what I would expect in a residential neighborhood, but I think there's some things we can do in conjunction with the Fair Housing Act that would give us an opportunity to look at this fairly from both perspectives. So, that's the only point I wanted to bring forward.
Thank you. Ms.?
I feel that this might affect the value of our homes.
Did you stand up and identify yourself?
Karen Poisant, 16 Snuggles. I feel like this might affect the value of our homes, being in the neighborhood. I have no problem with, you know, any kind of disability, anybody being in our neighborhood, but I feel like the cars coming and going day and night is going to affect the value of our homes, of people that are going to be selling our houses. And I really think that maybe we should get an abatement and the value, less taxes.
I don't, I hear what you're saying, and sometimes not knowing is scarier than knowing. So, I mean, you have all these visions in your head, like cars are coming and going, and there's going to be, it's going to be loud activity. We don't know that yet. And the way they kind of laid it out didn't seem as though it was going to be there. But I, again, I'll go back to having that constant communication with the people from Bamsi if we could. Also, with our building inspector, ensuring those things are well taken care of. But, I told you before, and I think Mr. Saad said the same thing, there are many of those facilities in town, and no one has an abatement. And they have, their value, their house values have not been lost.
Glad you brought that up about the abatement, because Karen's still here. Karen, looking for an abatement on my property right across the street. Are you guys going to grant that?
Do you know? Huh? That's what I thought.
Assessment is based on sale price. So, when the sales start to happen, if we're showing, if the sales are showing that people will not buy in the neighborhood, then the next value will be lower. But, we don't, we don't use that assessment process to speculate what might be happening when it hasn't happened.
I can tell you from my own experience that in the neighborhood where I live, there has been a couple of homes that have been sold over the last five or six years. Certainly didn't affect their sale value at all. And I would, in my own case, if I was going to sell my property, I wouldn't expect that there would be any change in what I would get if that place wasn't there. And, you know, these are things that we have to live with, because I think what's happened, and as you well know, over time, they've closed many facilities where people were helped. And when those facilities close, these people have to go somewhere. So, this is the current thinking about helping people out that have disabilities. They've got to go and live somewhere. And I, whether we all like it or we don't, that's the reality that we have.
Any other comments?
Yep. I'm Jay McMenamy. I'm 14 Snuggles Way. Just in terms of that, I'm the newest member to the Snuggles Way area. I would not have invested the money that I put into this house knowing that that facility was there. So, it's all, you know, well and good to say, you know, the home values aren't being affected, but you're taking a large pool of people who would have an issue with that, and you're taking away your buyers. So, to say that it's not affected kind of is unfair.
I said it wouldn't affect me.
Obviously, whatever's going on at Snuggles Way is certainly beyond our control, but you are talking with Senator Rodericks. Now, anything that happens with Senator Rodericks is probably going to be done at the house level. So, who knows where that ends up? From our particular standpoint, our guidance from the state is what it is, and we certainly can't change anything. Although, like everybody else, I share your concerns. Whitney Academy is my backyard, and I've seen it grow from one little house, you know? They've added additions, they've added floors, they've done many things. I mean, I'm a selectman. Nobody even picked up the phone and said to me, listen, there's going to be an expansion down there. It just doesn't happen that way. So, it is what it is, and I certainly, certainly appreciate your position. And you do have a public record as to where you stand, and you're in contact with Senator Rodericks, and that's a great place to start, right there.
And don't let it be lost. I know you're all caring individuals. I know a lot of you, and I know your children. Let's not forget, these are four individuals that are not institutionalized, that are going to be living in a home setting. I mean, that's an ultimate, that's a good thing. So, I get your fear, but communicate, let us know, and let's not get, let's not be lost on we're helping four individuals, just like we would help one another. That's all.
We do have two meetings a month. We have a consent agenda. Everybody can approach the board. If things you think need more attention, come right in, and we'll give you an audience, and we'll have another public record as to what's going on, you know? I think that's all we can say as a board at this point.
Yeah. And I do, Scott, want to look at their lighting design, if you could take a peek at that, because that would, that was one of the things I would, it said light, lighting, but I mean, I don't know what they mean by that. So, if we could just take a look at that and let us know.
Yeah, you know, during the construction process, if anything, you know, that doesn't fit the, you know, the character of a single-family home comes up, certainly bringing to your attention.
Yeah. I mean, a lamp post outside with one single light is different than, you know, a large facility with a couple of lights, and I wouldn't want to see that.
I'll talk as well, if you don't, if I could, please.
Sure.
Jay Correa, Snuggles Way. I was the first house on the street back 13 years ago. So, you know, I concur with what all the residents have stated. I think we're all reasonable people, and I think we all certainly respect the needs and/or care that every adult or person needs in society. My concern still lays with the three shifts of workers. You know, to say that there won't be any change, which I just heard a few minutes ago, that's a fallacy. The change in lifestyle for three shifts of workers coming up and down the street is a major concern for a neighborhood, and I think anybody in the room would agree to that. I'm curious to see how this goes on the third shift. There is no requirement for fingerprinting, like many now public servants and educators, as I'm well aware of, as I am an educator. They do require a Cory check, which is something, but I think that the next level should be considered by many of these organizations when you're going into a cul-de-sac of 11 to 12 homes. I think that extra step, and I'll certainly look at everybody, I think that extra step needs to be taken, especially understanding what school committee member Derek Gracia said. Their backyard directly abuts the school, and I'm glad that they mentioned that it's right now, Bamsi is stating that it will be four residents who need assistance. And I actually was the first person who called the town hall, because I was curious. We all saw a home going in, and then they filled in the basement, which was kind of a red flag. Why would anyone building a home pour a foundation and then just cover it up? So, my first call to the town was to, I think, the building department. I'm not sure who I spoke to, but I was quoted as saying it was, they told me it was a DMH facility. So, I want to actually thank the town for at least giving us some information, so we could at least do our research. But I think the concern does really need to sit with the selectmen and the select board of helping us. We need your help to somehow craft that this would remain the type of facility that they are now intending its use for. Again, with, I don't know how many students attend the elementary school, four, five, 600, that would be a major concern directly in the backyard if that facility were to change. So, I truly think to state on record that things won't change, that can't be stated, because we can't predict what the next second of, outside that door. So, everybody's life on that street does change for certain, as well as it does for our children. Three shifts of cars coming up and down. I don't know anybody that would, that would think that isn't a change. And I tried to remain, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I think we all gather in a forum that is, has been provided for us, which I much appreciate, and I'm really appreciative that the three of you are willing to listen to us. But I think, as Derek said, we've got to look at ensuring through Bamsi, their organization, that they possibly make a commitment to keeping the facility as they've, as they've stated. I don't think that's unfair. I think that would be the most sense for the neighborhood at this point. And I know every person in this room who's here. We've all emailed each other. We're a pretty quiet street, you know? But, you know, the fear of the unknown certainly is a concern. And I think that even though we don't know a lot right now, what we do know, I think we've all agreed as residents that that is a facility that, you know, we understand, and we certainly understand the intention of it. But I'd like to see some commitment from the organization, from Lucas Cavalo of Bamsi, from the legislature, from the elected officials of town, through what school committee member Gracia was saying, to keep it that way.
Well, and I agree. My concern is not with Bamsi. My concern is if Bamsi leaves.
Right.
That's my concern.
Right.
And that's how I stated it in the beginning. My concern is when they leave, sober living, you know, halfway house, you know what I mean? Not that those are bad places. I just, again, it is in close proximity to the school. We don't know what the effects on the neighborhood or the surrounding community is going to be. So, absolutely, I think, and I did talk to Derek about this, is setting up a meeting with the planning board and Lauren Moreau, our planning technician, and to see what other communities are doing to prevent anything happening, because right now, there is nothing in place. They can sell tomorrow, and they can buy, not only in Snuggles Way, but they can buy anywhere in town. So, I think that looking at a zoning restriction in that area, if we can, because again, remember, this is protected, right? I don't know what the protection process is for, you know, a sober living facility. But we're, I don't want to say we're jumping ahead. Right now, I just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable, as much as you can be, and maybe sit down with the owner, you know, with Bamsi themselves, keep talking to Michael Roderick, keep talking to us, and let's work on this problem. But at the same, same time, should that facility leave, we need to be proactive.
Well, they are in commitment with the state of Massachusetts to build eight to 11 right now throughout Massachusetts Bamsi home. So, with that said, when I asked the question, do you see another one coming to Freetown? The answer was no, because there are restrictions and guidelines within the mileage of where they can build these homes. So, again, I think that through your help and through your expertise in government matters, there has to be a way with what Derek suggested to retain their intention. And if they are to future, you know, in the future sell this property, that the...
You guys could all chip in and buy it at that point.
Well...
Well, if we had known, we would have done that.
Well, then eminent domain comes into effect as well, through federal or state, you know, laws. So, there are quite a few options, but at this point, that's where we are. But I think before we get to that, I would really like to see some commitment as to helping us through Bamsi, this intention that they've devised it for, you know, retains in this manner. And, you know, Lucas Cavalo, who's the, who many of us have spoken to, has been very forthright and willing to speak with us. So, I think that's given us somewhat of a comfort level.
Positive side, yeah.
It is. It is. But we would like to see that somehow, you know, whether it be in writing or at a meeting with all of you. I think that's the direction. As a neighbor, I'd love to see them sit down with all of us, including, you know, the board.
We can set that up.
Well, thanks for your comments. We have another thing. We have to move on to 6:30. Go ahead. 90 seconds.
Okay, 89. My name's Mike Maugh. I'm a current assessor. I was on the planning board. I've been a licensed real estate broker forever. And I've had, and I'm not going to speak directly to this place, but to some of your concerns, I can say that I've worked in neighborhoods where there are a lot of foreclosed properties. You have more chance of a foreclosure affecting your neighborhood, of a bad neighbor coming in. You can't control, you know, if you get a neighbor that comes in with three teenagers, you're going to have more than three shifts where the cars in and out. You know, you want to be careful putting yourself in a situation where you, for instance, limit the number of parking you can have, because that's going to limit your rights as well. I mean, there's all kinds of directions you can go in, but I can say that the experience I've had with this type of facility, oh, let me say as well, that there's sort of a built-in protection, because this, we have septic systems and wells in Freetown, so you can only have so many bedrooms in that property, and there are health codes that only allow a certain number of residents per bedroom. Since it's state-funded, they're going to regulate how many people can be there on a different level. You actually strangely have more protection with this kind of place than you do with any neighbor who can literally move in and bring 12, 15 family members, each of whom has a car, and they're parking them up all on the grass. You can really change the character of a neighborhood with, with an irresponsible neighbor. And again, I don't know these folks, and I haven't talked to them, but I suspect that this is the business they're in. People in this business tend to be very caring individuals and sensitive to everyone's needs, not just their own clients. and sensitive to everyone's needs, not just their own clients, and I would, I would expect that you would have actually better experience with this than you would if you had a nasty neighbor, and trust me, I have had a nasty neighbor.
One more comment and we have to move on.
I have a question, Karen, question sixty Snuggles Way, if you're telling me it's for four bedroom, the septic system is for four bedrooms, right? If that was approved, your planning board?
I'm not currently on the planning board.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Because if it's only four bedroom septic system, but yet they have shifts, three shifts of people coming through, there's going to be more people in that house than just the four individuals. Because you get the, everybody that's watching them, going to the bathroom, flushing the toilet, taking a-
The staff.
Yeah, taking showers and stuff. So what is the septic rules for that house?
Well, whatever, just, I can't speak to that, that would be a health department issue, but I can say that-
Two per bedroom.
Yeah, the, what it's doing is limiting the number of residents that are there, and again, you know, if you, as a private individual, have a lot of people in your home, I don't want to live in a place where somebody's going to tell me I can't have ten people in my house if I want to, or have, you know, my kids' friends come over or whatever, have, you know, and I realize that's a different level, but that's, that's sort of the pathy good now when you start restricting more and more, because in this case, I mean, I worked in neighborhoods where they said, no commercial vehicles, well, one of the owners is a plumber, he can't bring his truck home, he now has to pay for parking, no more than X number of cars in the driveway. We got a teenager that has a friend that comes over, you know, I mean, it just leads you down a different path, but I think you're in good shape with this type of thing.
I think you made some real good comments, the last comment's going to be by our building inspector.
Well, Jonathan Silvestre did a PowerPoint presentation, I know we're out of time, there's no way I'm going to bring anything new up, but I think everybody can benefit from reading it, because it's pretty comprehensive and it's maybe eye opening to you, because you guys are getting into areas that have already been spoken to and laws have been designed to protect, you know, the laws that protect you, protect them. I think a little reading will be a good point and I'll get this to whoever this is supposed to be, this PowerPoint will enlighten you to a lot of the rules that are there and why they're there. So I'll have to say.
It's Scott Barbado, our building inspector, and another gentleman, Kevin Bernardo, that's our health inspector, so get to know those two.
Can we get that up on the website, the PowerPoint? Why don't, we'll put the PowerPoint on the website so then you don't have to wait for-
Yeah, I just want to get John's permission, that's all, to do it, he said, you know, you can bring it tonight just in case, you know, I'll give you the section, but, you know, I can see we're clearly out of time, but I'll get in touch with you guys and we'll get it to him.
All right, thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, something very important to the town, it's a discussion relative to drug epidemic, you people with children and everything around, that seems to be going on in Massachusetts and New England in general, we've got a lot of deaths and things like that, so we're going to ask our police chief, Chief Abbott, and our fire chief, Chief Sylvia, to speak on this, if you would please. Thank you for your comments, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no doubt this is a serious problem. And it troubles me greatly when I go to these scenes and see young people that have been killed by heroin and other opiate products. I brought with me tonight our detective Shane Kelly. Shane, could you please share some of the statistics with respect to Freetown and Massachusetts as well?
Sure. So, my name is Shane Kelly, I'm the detective-
Shane, come on, why don't you come on?
I don't know everybody yet, I've seen a lot of you.
Not professionally, right?
It's usually a good thing if I don't know you. So, in Massachusetts in 2014, there were 1,089 opiate-related deaths. The statistics for Freetown, we had twenty-two overdoses, that's not just heroin related, it could be pills, it could be anything, we just label them overdoses, two of those were deaths. 2015, we've had seventeen so far, but we're in November already, five of those were deaths.
We've had, how many, seventeen?
Seventeen so far, yes.
Seventeen?
Five deaths.
Five deaths, yes.
Here in town?
In town.
So some of the things that we've considered in attacking this problem include sharing information with other law enforcement agencies, we only have one detective, I think it's best described that he's treading water at the present time with the number of duties and cases that he has. But because of that, we've joined the South Coast Anti-Crime Unit, we are part of the Southeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Consortium with thirty other agencies, and we try to pool our resources together to identify dealers and traffickers, and that's one point of the attack. Another point of the attack is that about seventy-five percent of the people that wind up doing heroin started with prescriptions and opiates, and, you know, stealing from relatives, stealing from medicine cabinets. So we work with the district attorney's office and we're going to try to get a dropbox at the police station, we've made application to CVS to provide some grant money for that, and we'll, you know, we'll encourage residents to drop off some of these drugs and pharmaceuticals. Probably not have a big impact, but at least it's a step in the right direction. Also working with other chiefs, the district attorney, and our legislative contingent, the White House has been petitioned to identify Bristol County as a high intensity drug trafficking area. What that means is, it may bring grant money into the county that can be used both toward law enforcement, but also on the health professional side. So that's another facet of the approach. Beyond that, and we had, I believe, education and looking forward through teaching children about the dangers, et cetera, was vital, and we had a very vibrant DARE program at one point where our instructors not only taught Freetown students, but Lakeville and Berkeley, well, that grant money was all eliminated. And then we had grant money for a school resource officer, and I encouraged that position to be morphed into including drug education and violence education, and that grant money was taken away. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can, but as, as the numbers show, it's more than a Freetown problem, it's more than a regional problem, it's, Massachusetts has a serious, serious problem as well as, as the nation. Just to give you some- So national numbers, it's been a thirty-nine percent rise in heroin deaths across the country from 2012 to 2013. As I told you before, seventy-five percent of the heroin users started with prescription opiates. Fifty percent of the heroin's coming in from Mexico, and right now there's about a hundred and thirty-three million dollars that's been designated to help fight drug addiction by expanding treatment for drug users. And that, that's certainly, that's a very important component when, when, when an addict needs that treatment, to be able to provide it in a timely manner, and right now it's just not being done on a wide enough basis. But nobody's immune from this, you know, black, white, it's hit the suburbs, it's a tremendous plague. I don't have the answers, just trying to do a little at a time. Chief, well, you know, I'm, I'm an old guy, I'm seventy-one, right, so I remember when I was eighteen, nineteen, they were advertising on the television way back that drugs kill you, be careful. It isn't like people that delve into these things don't know that there could be an extremely bad outcome. Doesn't that, do you think that message just isn't getting through? Or are we not promoting it? I think we're onto a little something there, I think when we, you know, say marijuana's okay, and, you know, what's the, electronic cigarettes and all these other products, I think we, you know, desensitize the seriousness of these other drugs, you know? You don't see a lot of it on the media, you see it once in a while on the news, but it isn't like you see a sign board, it's promoted. We probably spend more money on various things that aren't important as a nation than this, you know? It's just a shame. Somebody dies because of a drug overdose, it just doesn't affect them. The whole family, friends, hundreds of people. The last, the last two, I think there was a young lady, was it twenty-two years of age, and the gentleman was-
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
Twenty-three?
The last one was fifty-two years old.
Fifty-two?
That passed the week?
No, he didn't pass the week.
Yeah, can you tell us a little-
It's a miracle of a knock hand, it's just unbelievable how-
But can you talk a little bit about your runs and how many runs you have that are dealing with this problem?
Well, I went back to 2013, and we did, since 2013, we've done fifty-nine either drug-related or in the run sheet for the paramedics overdose type calls. And in 2013, there were eleven incidents, the average age of the victim was thirty-seven years old, only one was confirmed to the fire department as being heroin, that was in 2013. In 2014, there were thirty calls for overdoses for the fire department, and of these, the average age for the victim was thirty-three years old, and thirteen of these cases were confirmed as heroin to the firefighters or the EMTs. And it was five, we had five deaths that we know about, and obviously the police know more, they follow up with the ME. And then in 2015, so far, we've had eighteen incidents of overdoses, with the average age now being twenty-eight years old, as you see, the age is going down.
Yeah.
Do you think it's becoming cheaper on the street and more accessible?
It could just be a bad batch.
Well, they're mixing it with fentanyl, which is-
They're mixing it with fentanyl, yeah.
Essentially, all these younger individuals started taking pills because they were readily available a few years ago.
Yeah.
Now the companies have changed the composition, so you can't crush pills anymore, they become a jelly, so you can't snort them, you can't really abuse them anymore, and ones that you can crush are so expensive now that it's cheaper to go get this stuff for five dollars, ten dollars, but it's what they're mixing with it that's killing people and they don't know. You just buy a bag of white powdery, you don't know what's in it, or if you're going to make it through it, they just want that, that high, that fix.
How often are you using Narcan?
On monthly basis, I mean, it's one, because the more you use it, the more expensive it gets to replace it. It's almost like, you know, supply and demand, as there's more and more demand for Narcan, the price is going up and up.
You're comfortable with that, we're doing everything we can at a local level, chief? Well, I think we are, based on, you know, the resources we have.
Has there been any talk at the state level for more, because of the problem epidemic it seems to be getting to, to bring back the DARE program? Have you heard any talk about that at all?
None at all.
Then I think that it would be who less to get in touch with our state delegation and let them know our feelings about that and how important it is, you know, and maybe we can start the conversation to look into some, some DARE money coming back our way, because I think that they would-
Do you know what DARE is, why don't you? Well, it's a drug education program geared for-
I don't know the exact acronym.
Geared for young people, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, you know. Did you have an officer in school? An officer right in school, right? Yeah, we had an officer that went to several weeks of training to learn classroom and educational techniques, to learn the program, and then to deliver it in an effective method that students were attentive to, and it, you know, it got a lot of positive feedback.
And plus, they, they build a core with their students, so, you know, like, I feel like that's, almost like a guidance counselor, somebody you can go to and say, hey, my brother did this or that, and stops that conversation.
You're absolutely right, but what happened is, young people would come to the officer and share information about other kids that had problems, et cetera, we could then share it with the school staff, counselors, et cetera. It worked very well, it worked very well.
Shane, do you see that most, oh, hold on, I'm sorry, do you see most of your time being spent on this?
Because I follow up on everything that the patrol guys bring in, I really have to prioritize, there's not a day that I don't have a stack of files on my desk, but some things take priorities, like sexual assaults, I have to get right on those, constantly having B and Es, that kind of stuff. And I would love to be able to dedicate the time that a drug investigation does, because you really have to focus and just deal with that one thing, and I just, with the resources we have, we can't do that.
Chief, you have a question, you just started prosecuting a few doctors that, you know, have Alzheimer's.
Yes, certainly, yeah. And I know Mass is looking to pass some legislation to require physicians who prescribe these type of drugs-
Right.
And have some educational courses and warn them of sanctions if they do abuse that.
And a lot of the doctors now are sending the patients now to pain clinics, that they will give the medicines out, they, they can't get their pain meds unless they go to a pain clinic.
I just had a general comment, my name's Bill Lima, my son was actually addicted to opiates at one time, and myself and my, my family, we researched, and there was, there was one particular facility out in Pennsylvania that we actually sent him out to, it was very expensive, but I think one thing as you can, that you can possibly do as a town is maybe promote some of these facilities that will help, help people in this area. They, they do work. My son has been clean for the last three years, he doesn't drink, and he's, you know, he really, I mean, he really has done very, very well. So it's something, you know, I, I think it's low cost probably to the, to the town, but certainly if you can recommend some of these facilities where people can go for treatment, I, I think it's, it could stand to gain a lot from that.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
From the local border health staff, you pretty much just hit it, prevention, and mostly middle school age kids, a good time to, to reach out to them and treatment centers. They actually do work, and it is a nationwide problem, we're on the same boat, and I wrote here a few notes, addiction leads to unemployment, if you're hooked on drugs, you're not going to, you're not going to work, leads to crime, leads to family crisis, so we're all in the same situation.
Thank you, Karen.
Do we know how, how often the SRO officer spends his time in each of the regional schools? I don't know that, do you guys know that?
I don't know.
Because you're talking middle school, I don't know if the SRO is spending most of his time in high school, middle school, I don't know if he's doing any educate, I have, I have no idea, no? So you have, no, okay, well, I think that we should-
At that age, they're really, it's not to learn things, so you catch them early, try to stray them away from that, because in high school kids, they're talking about it, they're already kind of experiencing some stuff or experimenting. At that younger age, you really want to focus on them.
Yeah, but I, that's my, I, I think that we should get in touch with the superintendent and find out how much time the SRO officer is spending in each of those schools and is there any education going on, and if not, how can, how can we help just our kids in the elementary school?
Any other comments?
The fire department is the local, is the town designated to drop off medications and for used needles.
Used needles too, right?
So they bring them in, they give them fresh shop spots, and they can drop off and dispose, and dispose of it, save them on medications.
Just, just two quick things, I think the more we get information out to the public, the better it would be, and, and I think just sort of as a society in general, our outrage is in the wrong place, because if we had fifteen near fatal accidents last year and five motor vehicle deaths in this town, people would be up in arms and yelling and screaming this town, people would be up in arms and yelling and screaming about it. But yet we had the same kind of thing with a different substance. So it's just, it amazes me that we're not outraged more than that. But more, I think more information and thanks to this gentleman for, for telling his personal story, but the more we know about those kinds of stories and how they affect us, I think is important. And not, again, not to minimize the snuggles' way folks, but it just reinforces the point that this is going on all throughout the town and it's causing theft and, and other issues. And these, these are things that we've been legislating away. So there's danger in sort of all kinds of things that are going on. But I think the more we know about it, the better we do.
Actually, the reason why they're in is because this board truly believes that it is important to bring it up and to talk about it. And that's why we asked both the police chief and the fire chief, as well as the detective, to come in and talk about it because you had two deaths of two young individuals in less than two weeks. I believe it was about two weeks. And to me, that's just crazy. And if we just sit back and watch things like that without, without finding out, how can we help as a board and how can we help as a town, it just, it would just keep going on.
Don't you?
No, he's the chair.
Yes, sir. Talking with such clarity. I can't agree, I can't agree more. Part of the problem is that, I don't know a family that has been touched by drugs in one way or another. But that we don't talk enough about it. You read the obituary page and what do you see? You see young people, twenties, thirties, dying unknown causes. Unknown causes. Guess what? Nine out of ten times, it's, it's drugs. More often than not, it's, it's heroin. And that's a fact. And we need to be more open and discuss it more.
There's a lot of people that spoke like that, but there's a lot of people that don't wanna say that their child was a heroin addict.
Yeah, I understand that.
Other people deep behind the whole episode of jail.
Absolutely.
So it, it, if it comes out a lot more, it, it'll help a lot. But you gotta get them people to...
Sometimes it stops to just...
It's hard.
...give them meds. They don't know about it or they don't wanna turn them in.
Sure, that's right.
But they have to hide their own narcotic meds.
It's not a secret anymore, folks. You might as well talk about it.
Do you find, do you, as a detective, do you find, when you find out about an overdose, is it a, a young heroin user or a person that's been a heroin user for a long time? Is there more of one or the other?
Because we're such a small community, you get to know who's involved with a lot of that stuff. And you do see a lot of the same names. Even when we were pulling statistics, there were repeat names throughout the years.
And that's when you introduce them to a facility that can help?
Does the school system teach about drug, drug abuse and among those lines?
I'm sure they do. I'm sure that there is some of that at some level, but I mean, because of the MCAS and everything else, I think they're pretty regulated on how far they can go with that. And that's why we talked about looking into the DARE program and, and having some help with that because that, as you said, it started at the elementary school with the DARE program and, and you get, you know, you, you build that relationship with that. I mean, I remember the kids were all excited, you know, Officer Rose is coming in, da-da-da-da. So you see that and, and I think that that's true. That's been lost.
Well, I'll tell you, it'll happen, it could happen to anybody.
Absolutely.
We had Dallas.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, coming in. Chief Abbott, Chief Sylvia, Detective Shane, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, fellas.
Thanks. We've begun our weekly public discussion. Would anybody like to reach the board or anything they're uncomfortable with the town? Would you like to share with us? Like Jan. Would you like to... God, how do we know? How do we know? What would you like to share with us?
I would like to talk about the pipeline going through and the survey of the town property.
Anybody needs a map of where these pipelines are?
I thank you very much for doing this. This is a red line. This is not just a red line on a piece of paint. This represents a fifty-foot swath that's going to be going down this whole pipeline area. A fifty-foot area that nothing can be grown on, a fifty-foot area that all the trees are going to be removed from. A fifty-foot highway that's going to remain down this red line through Freetown and into Akushnet. But what's even worse than that is that it's gonna contain a pipeline that's going to carry gas to two huge tanks for storage. These tanks are not gonna benefit anybody in this area. The gas is gonna be shipped to Connecticut and Maine. And the reason that I feel they're doing this is because they think that the people of Freetown and Akushnet are low intelligence, low intelligence, low-income disposable people. They're not trying to build these tanks in Connecticut where the gas is gonna be used. They want it in Freetown where they feel that we're expendable. They, if there's a catastrophic accident, there isn't gonna be anything left for fifty miles. And I know some of you don't remember nineteen seventy-seven, when right in our own backyard there was a very small gas explosion. It took out four buildings in New Bedford, completely leveled, four historic buildings in New Bedford. It blew out all of the windows in the Whaling Museum and damaged many other facilities in that area. It blew off the manhole covers in the entire downtown area. They were blowing up into the, into the streets, into the air. And it's something that people have forgotten about. This was a very small gas leak in New Bedford. These tanks are gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty feet wide by a hundred-and-seventy feet tall. That's bigger than the tank on the way into Boston. I can't imagine an explosion from what that tank would, would do to this area. And although this is a survey and it seems like a very small thing to, to the town, oh, we're just gonna let them go across our property and do a survey. Well, that's fine. But the reason they're doing the survey is because they're gonna put this pipeline in. And you can't ignore the fact that that's what's gonna happen. And this is the first time I've been able to see where the town property is. And that means the town property is also gonna have a fifty-foot swath going through it with a three-hundred-foot buffer. That means from here, three-hundred feet into your, to the town property as well, is going to be a buffer for them to do anything they want to anytime they want. And it's just putting the residents in these two towns in a, in a very distressful situation. It's just a, a, something that I can't imagine anybody would think to put in a residential area. Why would they build this in a residential area?
I'm gonna make this comment. This past Saturday, Selectman Sadik and I spoke with Congressman Kennedy, Joe Kennedy, for about an hour. He was in this building. And so we chatted. We talked about a couple of things, but the major thrust of our conversation was this, this Algonquin pipeline. To his credit, Congressman Kennedy was very aware of the energy situation here in Massachusetts. He was very aware of how the pipelines, the Algonquin pipelines are fed. He was aware of the natural gas that's gonna be liquefied and shipped here from Yemen and brought into some facility in Everett, I think it was, in that Everett, Oregon, fed here. My feeling, he also made it quite clear that Congress isn't voting on this. This is a licensing function in the Department of Energy. He also made it clear that New England needs energy. They're closing down the Pilgrim Nuclear Plant in the Cape and they've closed down Brayton Point. And he says, New England needs energy. Where do you put it? And we mentioned the, he mentioned the tank in, off the southeast expressway. The tank's been there many, 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 many years. They've never had an issue with it. There's gives and takes. And I certainly, certainly understand this, but I can tell you, our congressional delegation is very aware of the natural gas issues here. He wanted all the figures on the tanks that were, they're proposing being built and took one of the maps. I, I can't say, I certainly don't speak for the congressman, but it seemed like he was aware. He wanted more figures and things which we're gonna provide. And he was interested in that, as interested in as we are. Now, is it a step? Yes, it's one inch in a thousand-yard race, but someone had a sign saying, we're the first, we're the starting line. And I can appreciate that. It wasn't until I walked with Kevin Dismaris, we actually walked up and down this right line it's gonna be, so I knew exactly what was gonna be figured, rather than hear say, no, you wouldn't have. And I think at this particular point in time, we have paperwork that's gonna pass in front of us that we either sign or not sign to give them the ability to survey the land. I certainly, from my perspective, and I certainly don't speak to the two selectmen, I don't live a hell of a lot far away from it than you two, Jan. You know, Paul and I both live miles on or over you. So, and there's people here that live closer. Earlier today, I got a phone call from a lawyer named Dana Sargent. He sent us a package and, nice guy. I, I kinda felt that the figures on the cover letter weren't quite right and I just wanna make sure the truth is out there about everything. And I thought he represented you folks. He said, hell no, I live in, of course, my son, my son lives a mile away from me where these tanks are going. He said, I'm doing this on my own. But, you know, I, I can, I think we have a sense for it as well as you do. And of course, as a Boris Lutkin in the town of Freetown, we have to live within the guidelines that are dealt to us by the federal government and the state, you know? So I'm glad you came. Gives you a platform to say what you wanna say and it's recorded and that's important. And would anybody else like to make comments? Yes, sir?
Although she spoke about that swath of land that you own.
Yes.
And the easement that they allot, that they're intending to put in. Now, if you take that easement on the public, on a private home, and that's a lot of land that they're easing up, that, you know, it's...
Well, actually, the paper we got, what we're looking at tonight is simply a contract that allows them to walk in the property. It doesn't give them any rights expected. It specifically says in the contract that we retain their right...
So even if we didn't sign the, the permission slip for them to go and, and do some surveys on our property, you're not gonna give them the right to go on our property?
On our property?
No.
On your property.
This is just about, this is just about these two parts of the land of the town. Your property is your property.
Yeah, 'cause all, all their statements, they keep saying, are always constantly changing. Just for example, the time they came here to do the proposal that they wanted to introduce the pipeline, they sent us mailed invitations for that meeting in Fairfield in, in New Bedford the same night. So we didn't even know that they were gonna be here doing that. They took us away and invited us...
No, that wasn't the case. There was a public session in New Bedford. All we were doing was getting a briefing, a quick briefing from these people. It wasn't an intentional act.
But it kinda seems a little ironic. It was the same night, the same time.
Before you, excuse me, before you speak, you gotta identify yourself again.
Oh, Joanne Ashley.
Joanne Ashley.
I'm sorry. Ignite your values. Nineteen eighty-one.
Jan McCumber.
Can I, is, is Jay McCumber's on? Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
If the LNG company...
I don't know what it is.
They're going to take a fifty-foot swath by four-hundred feet of my front property. That's roughly a half an acre. They say that that's not gonna affect the value of my property. Is that true? Now, they're gonna take all my woods that are there and they're gonna cut everything down. We aren't gonna be allowed to grow anything on it and it's gonna be just an, like a, a superhighway through my front yard.
Do you get a payment for this, you think?
They say that they will pay us for the easement, but it's an easement. It's not gonna be what an acre, a half acre of land is worth. But yet I'm gonna have to pay the taxes for the rest of my life on that easement. And I can't grow a tree, I can't grow my vegetables, I can't house my horses, I can't do any of that on this barren land that will be left. Nor will I be able to sell my house.
They can't speak to the value change specifically. I'll have to do some research. And I can tell you, just from past experience, when you say you're not gonna be able to sell your house, you would not believe the things that people buy and where they buy them and how they buy them. And I have a story that I can tell you later that's beyond description of someone that purchased the property on the right of way and built a house so close to the electric lines that if you touched a doorknob in the front door, you would get a shock. That's how close it was.
You probably got a really good buy on it, though.
I don't know how much it's worth to build a house you can't live in, but there you go. But, you know, and, and as far as the easement goes, you know, I, I don't know the legality of it specifically again, but I know in the past I've negotiated easements with utility companies on my own property. And when I say negotiate, I mean exactly that. They wanted X and I wanted Y and we had to make a decision on what to do.
Or they'll take it by eminent domain.
I don't... In my situation, they couldn't, but I don't know...
In this situation, they can.
Yeah, I don't know what...
Because if FERC approves the, the thing, then they can do whatever they want.
The concept of... Approves the project, it gives them all the power.
Yeah, and the, and the concept of eminent domain is to, to give you a reasonable value. So, you know, most people would think that the value is not necessarily reasonable, but it's taken individually.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Joe Cavalo with the Board's Commission. I, I live in Fall River. This, this company, and I brought this, actually. This is from the Pipeline and Hazards Materials Safety Administration of the Department of Transportation, federal agency. There's fifty-four violations here, listed, each one in a number of pages, that Spectra Energy has been found liable for, some which resulted in injuries. I, I printed one of the links out and this is for, now, now this is...
You gave us that last time.
Oh, I did?
Yes, you did.
Okay. I'll keep this one then. I, I don't know if I gave you the, the, the actual, one of, one of them printed out. The, the other piece of this, and, and of course, that's looking into the future. If they get their approvals and, and go ahead with the pipeline, three miles in, in Freetown, what I mentioned at a meeting in, in Akushnet was an article in the Boston Globe on August seventeenth, I, I believe it was. Big headline, there's twenty thousand gas leaks in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The oldest one goes back to September seventeenth of nineteen eighty-five. So I bring that up because why don't all these energy companies, and by the way, the, the cost of that gas leaking is over a billion dollars. And you can bet that the energy companies don't pay it, we pay it. I, I, I use gas in Fall River, cooking and, and heat. So I'm paying for the gas that they're leaking, the oldest one being thirty years old. It, it just doesn't make much sense that they wouldn't attack that issue first before they do any kind of proposals. But, but most of us know that this is about money first and foremost, always, always. Exxon, the biggest energy company in the world, commissioned scientists to do studies in the mid-seventies to late seventies to see if there was a, a, a link between the burning of fossil fuels and climate change and global warming. And you know what the scientists found out? That yes, burning fossil fuels contributes to global warming and climate change. So what did Exxon do? They spent thirty million dollars to discredit the very scientists that they commissioned to do that study. Because they don't wanna lose their, their golden egg. It's crazy. So why should we believe anything?
We need to stay on track here. We're a long ways. Now, Exxon's a long ways from surveying.
Well, always be prepared. I was a boy scout.
No, I get it. And I'm glad y'all... And I'm glad y'all came, but we still have a pretty good agenda here to go through.
I'll just make a quick comment.
One more brief, I'll make two more brief comments, and then we need to move on.
Again, my name's Bill Lima. I'm actually from Acushnet, I'm not from Freetown.
Well, you're welcome anywhere. I'm sure anybody says...
Well, Bill, anyway. I, I am about seven hundred and fifty feet from their property, so, to me, it's gonna change the entire character of, of the town of Acushnet. It's not only, it's not gonna be considered to be a rural, nice town for families, single families, it's gonna be known as the LNG town. And it won't only affect Acushnet, but it's gonna affect the eastern part of Freetown as well. It'll affect, impact the public safety of all those folks in the area, and would also impact property values as well. I just wanna say that.
Yours was the final comment.
I just wanna know if this is in stone already?
No, we're gonna vote on that next, on the agenda, whether or not we'll allow them to... You mean the design of the pipeline? Are you saying snow? What are you talking about?
The, the design of the pipeline.
That's the proposed path that the pipeline's gonna take.
I do have a special needs daughter, and I'm really worried how this is gonna impact her, and we have will and everything on our property.
I get it. No, that, that is the proposed pipeline.
So, you're gonna vote tonight on this?
We're not gonna vote on the pipeline. The only thing we're talking about tonight is whether we allow them to walk in those two person particles of land.
Okay, that's all you're gonna vote on?
That's all we're talking about tonight. Jan called me Saturday, and I talked to some other people about pipeline, and I said, "We just make a few minutes available for you to make comments," which we did. Well, you made a couple, you've made a lot of comments, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion. I'm sure we'll read about you in the paper, so that'll be good, but as, as, as it is not, we need to move on. So, we'll be, and I thank you for coming. We appreciate your time, we certainly appreciate your concern. Any comments, Ms. Pacheco, or Mr. Sade?
I'll wait till we get there.
I'll wait till we get there.
We're almost there.
We're almost there.
We wanna thank you for almost the time.
Yeah, don't leave, my mistake.
Next on our honor consent agenda is to discuss slash approve Spectra Energy Algonquin's asset, access to Freetown property. Now, Jack, we had a letter drawn up by our lawyers.
Yes, sir, you have that?
We have that. And I would entertain a motion to sign that contract and move ahead with them being able to survey our land. I hear no motion, so obviously, we're not gonna be surveying our land.
I'll make a motion to deny access to the property.
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded to deny access to the property. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just say a couple of things, if you don't mind.
You have the floor, Mr. Pacheco.
One of the things, I mean, when they first came here, it seemed so simple, we're just gonna walk the property. I think it was very eye-opening for me, because when they handed us a piece of paper, there was no protection of the town law. So, we did, this board took it to our town, town attorneys, had them, had them look it over, added some wording to it. Should we have voted in favor of it, that doesn't mean that the town was gonna give up their right to, to forge ahead and, and oppose the project. So, that was all in there, and I wanna thank our attorneys for doing that. But it also came, came to the board in talking to the Conservation Commission that some of that town-owned property was actually given to the town as a gift back in nineteen seventy-seven as a wildlife sanctuary. That's right. So, one of the, one of the things about that was that, that it affected local control. So, the conservation has a local control over that area. It's about twenty-nine acres, and it's to be kept in its natural state. So, even if they were to look at that and survey, they would, they may have to move the pipeline, and they wouldn't be able to do so. So, I think you, you walked the property. We had a nice, long chat, all of us, with the Conservation Commission on, on, you know, phone calls and stuff, but I just wanted you to know that there is a wildlife sanctuary there that was gifted to the town, and for that reason, I could not move forward with this. It's just the wrong fit for that. And, and somebody gives something to the town, it's for a reason, and we need to take that under consideration.
The next thing on your agenda, Mr. Sade?
I just wanted to comment. You know, we have a pipeline coming down Blackberry, we brought it, and it's been there forty-one years. At first, when we first got the information on this, and they, they visited the town, they met with the town administrator, I happened to be there that day, Jack asked me to vote, it didn't seem like a big deal. But as you get more and more into it, you find out that it, it is a big deal. And as I drive down Ann Rickards Lane and turn left onto Dr. Bailey, I see all my neighbors that have signs on it. So, there's no way in heck I'm gonna vote to allow them to cross the lunar land. But I'll tell you what my feeling, what I think's gonna happen. After the discussion we had on Saturday with the Senate, with the congressman, they're fully aware, the federal government's fully aware, as to the needs of New England. And, you know, I think that Algonquin is gonna get a permit. I'd be, let's put it this way, I'll be surprised if Algonquin doesn't get a permit. And once they get the permit, it gives them the authority to go through the eminent domain process. I specifically asked the congressman that. So, be prepared that, you know, I don't think they're gonna give up on this. And I certainly have your feelings, because I won't, I live a mile from her, and we're certainly in the thirty-mile radius.
And our concern is, they, they say different sized pipes, they can't give us a direct answer. They told him sixteen, they told us twenty-four, and on the information, it could go up to forty-eight inches, the pipes.
Well, I've never heard forty-eight, but I know that the time they met at the town hall, they came in to give us a briefing of, Jack and I, it was sixteen-inch pipe.
It's literature.
The time they came in here was twenty-four, but I've never heard forty-eight. That's pretty quick.
Well, on some of their literature, it says it can be, and then it says it can change, they can enlarge the existing pipes to suit what needs to be. It's on some of their paperwork they give us.
So, certainly, that's why you didn't get a motion over second tonight, I'm sure.
Well, we, we appreciate that, and we thank, thank you for it.
You have our answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
What my concern is, that eminent domain piece, I, I thought the law read that it was either for a, a government or, or a state facility, either a school, a hospital, or some highway. I didn't know that private entities could, could latch on to that eminent domain and...
We understand if they get a federal permit, that's, the permit authorizes that.
Let me just say this, so you guys know where the governments at. And this is my perspective. Is anybody here aware that it was illegal for this nation to export any energy products? Remember the seventy, well, you guys don't. In the seventies, we waited in line for gas. Congress passed a law that said it's illegal. Do you know that last month, that law was changed in the Congress? Well, you did, neither did I.
I did.
You were told by Senator, by Congressman Kennedy that they had back codes for it. We are gonna export natural gas.
We're afraid of that.
So, if you don't think that's gonna affect our prices, we're actually gonna be selling natural gas to Europe. How about that? So, there's a lot going on behind the lines that the board of selectmen, Freetown, and everybody else.
Not to interject, but would you be restoring the gas here for, for export to other countries?
I can only tell you, and this is my feeling, I didn't hear about shipping it to Connecticut or anything like that, but if you convert two huge plants to natural gas here, which has gotta happen, if we need electricity, it's gotta be made somewhere. And I, the term in LGI, I heard, was that if you close Pilgrim and you close Brayton Point, something's gonna be converted to natural gas, and something else is gonna burn natural gas. And the energy that's in those tanks is gonna be what's needed to support those two electric, electrical generating plants. That's what I heard. I didn't hear anything about Connecticut. It just amazed me how current the congressman was on where the gas would be offloaded, who was pumping it down here, he knew all of it. Oh, smart, smart man. So, it's something that they've discussed, for whatever reason. So, I figured I'd share that with you, because I didn't know we could export energy, I knew in the seventies we couldn't. But I guess last month, Congress voted on, oh, well, here we go.
Oh, well.
Do you think it'd be cheaper to build a pipeline up here from Pennsylvania? Or to just have it offloaded in a, in a supertanker that goes forty knots?
Which way they wanna do it.
That burns liquid natural gas both ways, which means you're running it for free. It's buying it from, I can't believe we're buying it from a country like the U.S. I just, last time, they blew a hole in one of our districts. And here we go, here I, it's always about money. So, thank you all for coming, I appreciate your time and your effort.
Thanks for listening to us.
You know where this board stands, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. You wanna go with that Atlantis call?
I just, I saw it on here, I know where it is.
Okay, all right.
We just couldn't get it.
Next is really important, and we're gonna discuss the holiday schedule.
Thank you.
Everybody's leaving.
Thank you very much.
What's that?
You don't know what's on that?
Mass exodus.
You can have one after holidays, all right.
They get that done and waiting. Thank you for your time, and thank you for giving another one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. And I will say this, I have been to a lot of, I have special needs work, and I've been to a lot of special needs, whole directly, they're saying, hey...
You did a good job. It's the fear of the unknown, that's what it is.
I can probably get the same, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, examples, yeah.
They don't, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be rebel rousing.
So, probably will be more concerning. Thank you for listening to us today.
Thanks, bye.
See you later.
Honey.
You wanna sit close?
Yes.
Oh, God, you're not gonna take a swing at me?
Are you guys here for a specific reason?
We are. We are looking to put a regulation on hanging of deer carcasses.
Yeah, it's on there, it's on the board health.
Oh, it's on, okay, all right.
So, you wanna hang deer carcasses?
No. I dealt with it for enough time, don't wanna see it no more.
Did you? How are you? I haven't seen you in so long.
Hanging in there. It's tough, I'm hanging in there. At least the kids are very good. I got a band out of the guns on.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have to wait, Billy.
Yeah, sure. I wasn't up on next.
You are.
Well, we gotta, we gotta discuss the holiday schedule.
Oh, holiday schedule. What are you looking for, Ally? It's all about Ally.
Yeah, and we'll usually close the day after Thanksgiving, we close, and they get to take the personal day.
This is all her idea, isn't it?
Yeah.
Ally?
Well, it just, then people, they have complaints.
Black Friday, yes, so you can go shopping?
I think it's a Friday.
So, I can just wrap the belly.
I get New Year's in there, right? What's going on with holidays?
Hey, Lynn, is the camera slow?
We're asking Ally.
Yes, today.
Ally, Ally? All right, the day after Thanksgiving, close, we typically do, right?
The day after Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
How, how do we normally work that, though?
They close, then everyone has to use personal...
Personal day or night.
Or come to work.
Or come to work, if you wish. But it's closed to the public.
Yep.
And then Christmas Eve, Thursday this year.
Do I have to do something, he and his elected member, do I have to come here and sit around a little while? What am I supposed to do?
Whatever you wish to do. And then Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve is a Thursday this year. So, we close at noon, like we usually do, and then everyone can work until two, and then we close, usually at two o'clock, we close, and then pay everyone.
I'll make a motion to do what we've done the last two years previous.
Does that mean that we get invited to the Christmas party?
Do we get invited to it, Mr. Sade? Do I have a second on that, Mr. Sade?
Thinking there might have been some coal in some of those stockings, by the chimney with gear.
Boy, you got rid of me, if you want.
I'll second that. She's back.
Thanks.
God, I was waiting for you to leave, I was gonna...
Now, you would've taken a hundred dollar bill, so I'd pop...
Oh, my God, I missed that.
I made a, I made a motion.
Did you?
I seconded it.
I have a motion made and seconded to do what we did last year and the year before, days are fallen favors.
Aye.
Can you just forward that, once you have that all written out for us? So, we'll know.
Next on our agenda is Board of Health to discuss proposed new health regulations with Health Agent Kevin Bernardo.
I just love when I get more paperwork.
It's a proposed regulation under the Board of Health, under the section, dispose of dead animals, foul and other offensive material. This came to be after we had some complaints last year of individuals hanging their dead deer, or after they hunted it for long extended time, and it became very offensive to deer buddies. I just wanted to stress that, in no means with this regulation are we trying to restrict any hunters, how they properly field dress their, their animals. We just were looking for, and I'll read the section here, under D, that's the new section, properly tagged, field-dressed animals during hunting season must be stored fifty feet away from all property lines. This also includes animal parts, carcasses, bones, and skins. And there's some enforcement action with that. And the idea behind that is, these individuals would not be making other individuals feeling unsafe, or feeling as they're a nuisance. I believe that you had brought pictures.
I have pictures.
Oh, I don't want to see them.
Were you here for that?
Oh, I was.
So, it wasn't just one deer, or two, it was six deers hanging by a noose.
Would they cure them?
Nope.
It was just a head, and the skin, and the legs.
What was it doing there?
It was just hanging there at the decoration, on the shared property line.
On a shared property.
My dear, who's got plenty of private property, where we don't see it.
See the markers at the property line, and that's where the deer can go.
On this particular case, it was right on the property line, and there's one other individual, if you ever drive by Chase Road, you'll see somebody that hangs in there right on the road. Nobody ever complained about that individual, but this would just go blanket for everyone.
How long were they hanging?
They were hanging for... For almost eight, six months, it was there.
But to that person's defense, we had a long way there. So, when I had talked to the environmental police, they were saying, as long as the temperature was right, they could field dress an animal. And besides that, the environmental police, I couldn't get too much help from that, because they, they would look and they'd say, "Oh, he tagged them, they're properly field dressed, Board of Health problem." And everybody kept throwing the problem to me. We had our local police department visit this neighborhood constantly. It was mostly, almost every other day. So, we're hoping that this regulation will benefit everyone.
Can I ask a few questions, Mr. Wildgarden? Yes, sir. How far away from your house?
It's less than fifty feet.
Less than thirty feet.
Less than thirty feet.
From my, inches of my garage.
You can see on the picture. Ten feet from my daughter's swingset. Not even.
And his driveway's like seven hundred feet.
You see that driveway, that, that long driveway?
It's a long dirt driveway.
And he had plenty of room to...
He has nine hundred feet behind us, he lives, nine hundred feet.
Well, if you put him on the other side, it wouldn't affect you.
No, he lives nine hundred feet behind us.
He put it in his backyard, it'd be about three acres away from our house.
So, what you're saying is, this individual put it right up next to...
He literally did it, he did it literally.
And then I had, I had used, which we already have as a regulation, to cite the individual, because it became offensive.
Did he, did he, did he take him down at that point?
He did.
No, no, I had to call the police, and they came, because they had a three...
After I intervened, when, when we came up with this, with the regulation. It went back and forth for a long time. I can't lie, it went back, police department was there constantly, environmental police kept throwing it back on me. We looked at the regulation, there it was, no person, no person shall place or cause We looked at the regulation, there it was. No person, no person shall place or cause it to be placed or left upon in the public or private street. And it just goes on to say an animal. And then it says if it became nuisance, became offensive, or a health hazard. And at that time, it was already warming up. Obviously, it was offensive and he was just trying to get onto these individuals' skin.
So if we... If we already have it...
I wanted to add to it.
Why do we want to add?
I wanted to add this...
I don't like a lot of rules.
I wanted to add this section and this section only says fifty feet away.
Just so he can't hang six deers directly on the property line.
It was...yeah, it was right on the property.
I know there's a littering law as well because he was putting the actual carcass, like the rib cage. We have property stakes. It was on top of the property stake.
Okay, I mean, that guy was just aggravating you.
Yeah.
All right, but so in other words, in your case, if we enact D, if we enact D, he can bring it fifty feet away from where he had it and he'll still see it.
But he wouldn't be able to in his driveway because...
He has not enough room between both neighbors.
So his driveway is very narrow. It's similar to your table where if he puts it fifty feet away, it's gonna be on our property line. If he puts it fifty feet the other way, it's gonna be on their property line. Unless he goes the nine hundred feet back and he's on his property in his backyard where he has about two acres of land that he can hang a deer.
And the only reason I added that is, again, I'm not trying to deter anyone. There's a lot of hunters in town and they're gonna do that. But if you place it at least fifty feet away, the neighbor doesn't just see it, right, right when they open the door. And on this case, you couldn't miss it. They were hanging literally.
I didn't see the picture.
Right on the property line. They were all just hanging there. And when we asked them to move a different place, he said, I have every right to do that. I said, you do, sir. And now that's when I try to keep it slightly away. Fifty feet away, I think is very reasonable.
Not only that, I mean, there's diseases that dogs can get, especially we have dogs. They're allowed to go on the property line whether they're on a leash or if they're free in the yard. And any of our dogs could have very easily just gone to one of those piles and still be on our property and pick up a deer bone or anything. Wow, the animals' foxes are constantly bringing the deer parts back onto our property. So, I mean, it's...
I'm having a problem with this neighbor because we got a farm over here. I even called you on that. He stole his stuff over a berm that I built. The deer with skin.
This is the same neighbor?
Yes, this is the same neighbor.
Remember we took pictures? This is not...
Yes, if Snuggles Way would've stayed with us, it would've been beautiful. Because they know all about it, too.
This same neighbor also has a buzzer going off that you can hear down Snuggles Way consistently.
Well, my posture is, I'm never, ever gonna vote on something that's put in front of me the same day. I'll postpone it to the next meeting so we have time to talk about it.
When it comes to the proposed regulation, the way the procedure goes, the Board votes to entertain it, to entertain it, I believe, or votes to approve it, and then you have to post the two consecutive weeks here.
You have to have a notice. Yeah.
Then at the next, as a public hearing, as your next Board of Health meeting, at that time, it's been posted, anyone can come in. Any individuals, any hunters. The Board would open up the meeting as a public health hearing to that first, open it up for discussion, close the meeting, vote, then open up the next one. That's how I believe it goes.
I'd like to comment for a second.
Yes.
I think it's an awful situation that they had to go through. But here's what I...I get concerned when we enact a new rule or a new regulation because you had one incident where you have somebody doing this to some other person and we have to enact a rule that's gonna affect everybody in town. Because we haven't had any other complaints from neighbors of hunters and there's plenty of hunters in this town.
But that's because they're doing it properly.
They're properly disposing of their things.
Like he mentioned Chase Road. I've driven down Chase Road and I've seen it.
And they're using it as me and they're hanging.
And do what he's gonna do.
That's doing it the right way, by the legs, not by his neck.
That's not offensive. I have not a prob...I don't even have a problem if he wanted to try it legally. But to throw things in your face and hang them.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can't we enforce this with another rule?
Well, can I just say one comment? There are other laws in multiple states that say it has to be three hundred feet away. And this is state regulated laws, not just each town regulated. When you have a hunting license and even the NRA states it, they're supposed to be dressed properly. You're supposed to only hang it for fourteen days after hunting season is over. This gentleman hung it for a lot longer than fourteen days after hunting season was finished. And also when it comes to disposing of animal remains, you're supposed to either bury them three feet deep, bring them to a landfill, incinerate them. You are allowed to put them in a compactor. But it has to be three hundred feet away from any property line, especially in a residential area. And other states have already done this. I mean, I have a lot of different sportsmanship websites that I printed out and along with the NRA. I don't know if he's a member of the NRA, but if he was, they would definitely revoke his membership if they seen the pictures of what he's been doing because it's very unsportsmanlike.
It's just not right.
No, it's wrong in many ways.
So what are the regulations when we get a gun license in town? Is it spelled out in that law? Do you know?
What, for a gun license?
Yeah.
That's not hunting. You can have a gun license and not be a hunter.
All right, can...how about a hunting license? Is it spelled out?
When I spoke to the environmental police, they told me about the hunting is as long as they're properly tagged. And I asked them too, can they dispose of them anyway? I didn't like the answer. He said, typically, you're supposed to bury it. But if you just, if you have a large enough property, you just throw it back there.
Yeah, the coyotes will get it, but not next to somebody's house.
So there really is no standards. All there is is properly tagged animals. And I was just looking to say the same thing. As long as they're properly tagged animals, it must be in the hunting season, fifty feet from the body's property. We have also, to get off topic a little bit, if you wanted to have a horse barn or we go out, you have to be a hundred feet from the body. I'm sorry, fifty feet from the body where you're gonna store your manure. So it's kind of the same, we're just using that fifty as a catch-all.
By the same token, it's probably most hunters are well beyond fifty feet. They'd never know there was a new regulation.
Exactly. It would not affect the hunters.
Because they're abiding by...
Right, he wouldn't have been driving seventy-five feet down his driveway hanging it near my daughter's swing set.
By the Hunter's Code of Productive Ethics that they live by.
Can we put this on the issue?
Is there a way?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, not that way. You just stop right there.
Don't say your own camera.
Let's do this.
And why don't we leave it on the next agenda?
Let's put it on the next agenda and give us some time to look into alternatives to changing the law that'll solve your problem forever.
If you just think about the diseases that it spreads, children...
Well, there's many reasons. I'm on your side.
Children that it affects, like, you know, it's bringing in...
That should. If I had a neighbor doing that to me, I...it would make me crazy.
This is just...this is beyond me.
No, I get it.
And I do have a problem because it's still an ongoing situation with new bones being showed up, new stuff inside of a doghouse that he has in his driveway. And it stinks in that doghouse. That doghouse stinks. Whatever he's putting in that doghouse.
I had an animal.
It stunk.
Don't we have this already?
Yes, we've gone through this.
I visited you today. I didn't know there was stuff that stunk.
That was...that was...
But that can deal with what she's talking about right now.
It can, it can.
Lisa Podolsky?
And she's making light of this to me now. I can definitely go out.
Has Lisa Podolsky been there on her animal control?
No, not in the animal control, not.
No, I mean, you can deal with what she's talking about now is right here.
Yeah, it's the first time I've heard of that new condition. When I went out there today, there was a sign that said keep out made out of bones, but it was just, it's Halloween.
Right.
I told you.
Well, he moved it. It was facing my closet.
I had a bunch of skulls on my...I'm not gonna win on that one.
I got a rib cage near my daughter's plate thing. They just left it on the ground on this property line.
Recently?
No, when this all started.
When this all started.
And it's still there.
Yeah, but that still isn't gonna be addressed by what you want to propose.
It would because as soon as I, we located this one, again, I was throwing it back. Environmental police, they were throwing it back at me and I was like, oh, here it is. We have this. But then we just wanted to add this because I can cite him all day and take him to court. But he's going to in front of a magistrate or a judge say, I have every right to place my items. It's a pelt. I'm drying it. We were going back and forth. We're just looking for, yes, as a hunter, you have these rights.
He's pushing the law up to a certain point.
He's just harassing me.
He's pushing...
Yes.
He's doing everything he can. Right, he's playing the line.
We're not trying to stop anyone. We're just saying, as a hunter, yes, you can do this. Place it fifty feet away.
Let's put this on the next agenda and give us a couple of weeks to look into it, see what's going on, and we'll pursue it from there. Is that fair?
That'd be great. That'd be great.
So that's November sixteen.
That'll be November the sixteenth.
Is that before the body?
We're gonna have a barbecue.
We never get invited to the parties.
That's only to review or not to for a public hearing.
No, 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 no. We're just gonna review this and any more information you can get to us, that would be perfect.
Can you...what's the chances you stopping by and seeing this guy again based on what they're talking about tonight?
I can go there tomorrow. If he has the stuff in the doghouse, I could say there's a complaint.
How bad you smell it?
What I do with all complaints, I go to verify. If it's a valid complaint, then we address. If it's not, then...
Here's the thing, you guys have to be very careful because he's doing everything he can to push your buttons.
Oh, I know. I know.
And he's just gonna keep pushing right now. So I mean, I think that...
I haven't been complaining upon these others except for it's a totally different issue. It's off topic. But he has this wonderful buzzer that when you drive through the driveway, it sounds like the end of a basketball game. And you can hear a sound record.
Oh, so he wants to know. He wants to know when people are coming to his party.
No, he plays with it. He has a remote control.
Not at five o'clock in the morning.
I have four days of footage of my daughter playing in the yard and he's just got it going off every day.
Soon as she goes outside, he just...
She won't go outside. She won't even go in the yard.
The guy is becoming a nuisance in free town.
With a fifty-foot buffer, it just liberates the resources that we've wasted. Police Department, environmental police, myself, all went along. It was once a week.
At least because he was doing something.
I was dealing with...
Somebody else is doing it the right way. He's doing it.
I was dealing with constantly with a fifty-foot buffer. You would, yeah, would you hurt the person on Chase Road? He's got a lot of land, but you just say, from now on, you have to place it fifty feet.
What about the other hunters in town?
Fifty feet away. We're not stopping anyone. We're not asking to stop.
No, but what about the other hunters then? How, I mean, we're affecting more than one person.
Fifty feet is not much. I mean, think about fifty feet. Most of us have a fifty-foot driveway. I mean, that's just asking you not to put the deer at the end of the driveway and put it closer to your residence if you're gonna...
The reason you have the problem is because this guy is doing this intentionally.
Yes, he is doing it intentionally.
But also it's causing bugs. We've had more flies this year and I do have foxes. I understand why.
I understand. I understand.
This year was really bad.
I'm not taking his side at all, okay?
We're just looking for protection.
But now you got the buzzer issue. How do you deal with the buzzer issue?
I block my ears and shut my door.
In a civil matter. I told them there's some things we can't do anything for you. You have to take it civilly to court. On this one, we could address it. That's why I just...it's a proposed regulation. I brought it up.
Yeah, let's look into it.
Yeah.
I just don't want to see another deer come hunting season again this year and being hung for six months in front of my face in my driveway.
And I figured this was a pretty simple law since a lot of states have already followed suit in doing this. So if they can do it right, we also have the same...
Eleven sixteen, maybe we'll have one of them.
Nobody could do anything for us. All went along. We had a look at this. I mean, it was pretty gross. And then at the end of winter, he hung three of them in my face.
Okay, we pass this law. Guy does it again, what do we do? You cite him? He goes to court?
Yes.
He pays the fine or he goes to court?
He pays the fine, but each next incident, so it could be the next day, is a hundred dollars again. Then we just proceed with the court injunction for compliance.
He doesn't like paying fines, so he'll take it down.
Yeah.
Can you have a conversation and tell him that we may propose doing this?
I will.
If he doesn't...
You might want to suggest to him that the family came before the Board's election and we're aware of what's going on.
I don't think he very much cares.
He doesn't care.
We've already went to court for him and he just didn't show up.
So what happened to this guy?
He pressed false charges on me saying I pulled his gun. It cost me three thousand dollars.
She put false charges on child molestation and all this other stuff on tape and tape.
I've been there almost twenty-eight years. Never had a problem.
We had to go to court and spend over a lot of money on this.
I've only been there a year. I've never spoken a word to these people. They've never introduced themselves to me. They've never even, I don't know...
They all live at the same place?
No.
Oh, you're an Ellis side name? So you're affected too. Now we got two.
Right, his driveway is what separates our property from his property.
And all started because we became friends with them first.
I don't know how it started because I've never spoken to these people, but it's quite a nuisance for myself in my head.
I only participated and drafted these regulations.
I also started talking to other neighbors about the buzzer because, I mean, if I hear it... I can hear it in my bed with my window closed like I'm standing right in front of it. So if I can hear, I've started asking other neighbors. I know people on Snuggles can hear. People as far as, I don't know the names.
Where's the noise?
With smoke can hear it. It's just, it's just a nuisance.
Oh, that's the noise?
There's actually no noise ordinance in free town.
Yeah, there's a third where idle in the car at tack or whatever it is at certain times, heavy machinery. On that one, again, it has to be...
It's gotta be up to so many decimals, though.
Yeah.
Because...
I'm not even gonna touch that. When it comes to this one, I just wanted to state...
I have to move on with the meeting here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more statement. I only, I drafted those, these regulations because they made sense, not because I took all this information and I was signing with any of these parties. It just made sense to me at the time, so this would eliminate the situation.
No, I understand. No, I understand. Yeah. But the only thing that bothers me is I hate to put regulations in to fix one problem, but it affects everybody else.
The other people are buying by the Hunter's Code of Productive Ethics, so it really affects...
I know. I know what you're saying.
All right, moving on.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eleven sixteen, guys, you'll be back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we'll probably have some more information. Good, you know? Okay.
Yeah, as long as they can hang it away from me, that'd be fine. I'll be very happy with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
We'll have a lovely party.
Venison?
Sure. Next agenda, discuss slash approve sick leave carryover for Kimberly fails. Kimberly?
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Kim.
How are you?
I'm fine.
I wonder what you were doing here.
You had nothing better to do. I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is this under personnel or is it under you?
Personnel.
Oh, sorry, I can't make a motion.
No, you can make the motion.
You're supposed to be running this thing.
You can make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Good night, Kevin. Thank you.
Kevin, see you later. Thank you.
We'll be in touch, Kev.
Motion made. Oh, you're doing it. Okay.
Right.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was it.
Okay.
You didn't bring any goodies, huh?
No, you don't need any goodies.
Oh, wait, watch it. Yeah.
I shouldn't even talk like that. My wife might be watching the video.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it?
No, we have a lot of... Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. We'll do this as a... We'll have discussion on that. I'm just kidding. All right, change of status forms for Bob LaFerr from twenty-eight to twenty-eight forty-two, Lisa Podolsky from twenty thirty-five to twenty eighty-six, Kevin Bernato, thirty-three twelve to thirty-three sixty-two, Scott Barbado, thirty-five seventy-nine to thirty-six thirty-three, Dorothy Ballard, twenty-eight to twenty-eight forty-two, Jackie Brown, forty-nine eight ninety-five to fifty-one three ninety-two, and Mr. Maycomer from sixty-two seven nineteen to sixty-four six hundred fifty-seven. All approved by the town meeting.
Motion to approve the status reports as listed in red by selectman Pacheco.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Does all the court fight, but it isn't a red poll?
Okay, we'll get to that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just as a little caveat, I know there was major, I am, discussion going on at the town meeting regarding Charlie, uh, Charlie, Chuck and Jackie Brown, and I have been doing some research. I will report back to the board when my findings are done. But when you are comparing apples to apples, you are comparing apples to apples. And the jobs descriptions, especially for the highway severe, are extremely different in some of those, some of those towns that had the higher rate. For instance, in some of those towns like Lakeville, they take care of all the cemeteries and all the parks. They do all the mowing for all the cemeteries and all the parks. Westport, their roadways are a hundred and forty miles of roadway. So I, I'm gonna take everything that I've learned, I'll put it in a spreadsheet for everybody and, you know, we can look it over. So I just want to let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we have. Change of status forms for. Is this broken?
Yeah, this is on, it's on the list.
Yeah, you keep going.
I guess so. All right, change of status forms for Graham Ashley, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Tommy Ashley, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Mallory Browns, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Greg Calvo, sixteen to sixteen twenty-four. Joshua Farady, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Robert Ferrero, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Nathan Gagnier, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. James Gonaville, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Kyle Grenier, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Joshua Hathaway, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Vincent Carnapin, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Brent LaRue, seventeen fifty to seventeen seventy-six. Christopher Massey, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Steven Madera, sixteen to sixteen twenty-fourth. Matthew Oleen, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Kyle Olson, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Zachary Patita, that's such a hard name to say, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Danielle Poole, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Eric Reynolds, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Kevin Rizendi, fifteen to fifteen twenty-three. Vernon Roberts, nineteen to nineteen twenty-nine. Andrew Robinson, thirteen to thirteen twenty. Ryan Sylvia, sixteen to sixteen twenty-four. Jonathan Simmons, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. Kevin Smith, fourteen to fourteen twenty-one. And Kevin Rizendi, fifteen fifty to fifteen seventy-three.
Motion to approve the changes status forms, second as red by selectman Pacheco, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, I have in front of me. I don't have it in front of me, I have it right here. Yeah. Yeah. No, not that one, this one first.[1697.71]